Morning.
Morning.
I'd like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cellphones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on television, on Comcast Channel 99, and rebroadcast on WMGJ radio. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles, here. Councilman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Eccles?
Here.
Billingsley?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Toles to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
As the City Council and as the citizens of Gaston compose their hearts and minds for this meeting, Father, we come before you just thanking you that you will give us the words and wisdom to conduct the business that you have called us to do. We pray for every citizen of Gaston, we pray for this community, and we pray for the City Council, the mayor, the staff, and all those that are working to make the city better. Father, we pray that everything that we say be done decent and in order, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Amen. Praise the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting held on November 29.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of November 25th through December 1st.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation, Mayor.
I'm going to ask Jeremy Ward to come up with the engineering department. Jeremy is involved in stormwater runoff and anything to do with water, he's involved in it. Whereas the City of Gaston recognizes the water quality of our rivers and streams affects all of its citizens, the City of Gaston along with the surrounding cities and agencies such as Keep Etowah Beautiful, Gaston Water Works, and Sewer Board has joined in efforts to improve the water quality. The City of Gaston recognizes that one means of achieving better water quality is through the education of its citizens regarding factors that impact it. On December 9th, 2016, the City of Gaston, Keep Etowah Beautiful, the Gaston Water Works, and the Sewer Board, and several other cosponsors will host the annual water festival. The goal of the festival is to educate our 4th graders in the City of Gaston as well as Etowah County about the water quality and to encourage all citizens of the City of Gaston to become involved to help improve our water quality. The City of Gaston is committed to protecting our rivers and streams and we ask all citizens to join us in this work. As we work together, we can have a greater impact on our environment and our city. Therefore, I, Sherman Gotten, Mayor of the City of Gaston, by the virtue of authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim December 4th through December 10th, 2016, as Water Quality Awareness Week in the City of Gaston.
Just to give you some numbers, this is our 16th year that we're doing this. Friday, we will have over 1,200 4th graders, 60-something teachers, 200 volunteers, plus bus drivers and everything else that comes, and each one of them's there to be taught about water. And we'll, we give them three easy steps on how they can protect it, how they can do it. I traveled earlier this year to a South American country where our interpreters almost died because they got thirsty and drank the water. We are blessed with what we have and it's just an easy way for us to protect it. Thank you.
Council President, I'd like to say that I, I had a former student in that program when they were at Donahue, and they went on as a result of that program. They went on to major in an area that had to do with the, with the biologist and with the water as a result of attending that program in the 4th grade. So it's a good program.
We always appreciate Jeremy. Jeremy, you know, is, is one of those individuals that many cities have, but he functions kind of quietly behind the scenes, does a great job, very dedicated, and we really appreciate, you know, his dedication to, to ensuring and taking on causes like this. So thanks again.
All right, unfinished business. Item number 8A is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 603 Cowell Street in District 3, Bessie Scott, Lois Scott, in the state of Alabama being the last known owners. This resolution was tabled for 60 days on October 4th. What is the pleasure of the council?
I move to abate.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Uh, yes. I tabled this back on, uh, 10/4/16 for 60 days, and there's no approval been made. I got a complaint on the house again yesterday, and I went out to look at the house and they haven't touched the house. So, uh, I'm moving to abate the house.
Is there any additional discussion? All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution approving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license. This is Pete Capes doing business as Palermo's Italian Grill located at 607 East Meagan Boulevard. They have, they have applied for a restaurant retail liquor license. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
That's in District 2, isn't it?
That is in District 2. Does anyone wish to speak in favor? What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay, any additional discussion? And again, this is the, uh, this is the former Pizza Hut property, and this is just us backfilling this legacy, legacy piece of commercial property. All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 10 is a resolution awarding bid number 3331 for a recycle trailer. The NEAPA coordinator has recommended awarding the bid to Outback Trailers, and the amount is $1,400 for a six-and-a-half-foot by 10-foot trailer. I think we're gonna be purchasing around 14 of those. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved, second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 11 is a resolution authorizing the satisfaction of a nuisance abatement lien. John H. James Jr. has offered to pay $100 to satisfy the lien on property located at 1401 Stroud Avenue in District 1. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
I move for adoption.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 12 is a resolution authorizing satisfaction of nuisance abatement lien. John H. James Jr. has offered to pay $100 to satisfy the lien on property located at 1420 East Broad Street in District 1. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
I move for adoption.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
I save my discussion for both of these. This is an example where we abated property, but a citizen who has been keeping it up chose to buy it after all the legal means were made. So I'm saying all that to say that if you live near property that's been abated and it's clear and you want to purchase it, then you just make the city an offer and you can get that, you can get that property, but it has to go through legal channels first.
And the big, and the big thing to remember with those is that you're, to the point that Dr. Toles made, you're, you're purchasing the city's interest in, in the property, so you're not necessarily buying it outright, you're purchasing the city's interest in that property, so.
And it goes back on the tax rolls.
That's right.
Right.
This point she made, you, it definitely goes back on the tax rolls and, uh, you know, and that's a good thing. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 13 is a resolution authorizing the satisfaction of a nuisance abatement lien. Paulette Lee has offered to pay $350 to satisfy the lien on property located at 3322 Williams Avenue in District 7. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business, is there any new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have two requests coming from the police department. The first one is an ordinance amending the fiscal year 17 budget to account for the JAG grant in the amount of $34,603. Ask for unanimous consent, please.
Second.
Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent for consideration.
Move for adoption, please.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
I have one more resolution for the purchase of control equipment from the JAG grant applied for intercepted. Asking for unanimous consent.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for adoption, please.
Second.
Okay, any, is there any discussion?
Yes, this grant is the, uh, purchase of equipment for the police department, and out of the $34,603, $22,000 of it will go to the Gaston Police Department, the rest of it goes to the county, to the Etowah County Sheriff's Department.
Okay, is there any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business? Department reports, committees, boards, citizens request, Mr. Avery? You, you know the rules and for the first time, I always got you on the clock.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I do know the rules, but I also know protocol, and as a former member of this august body, I ask that I have that personal privilege to cut that clock off. Now, you want to go? But yes, seriously though, it is not going to take me more than five minutes, but I do request that the clock be turned off as courtesy since I was a member of this body for some 20-some years. I'm just going to only be here a couple of hours. You know, um, I want everybody to know, particularly those critics out there who said that I needed to stay away for two years because of the ethics law, my two years is up, and I will be here frequently and regularly, so I just want to make sure that they understand that I'm adhering to the law. I stayed away for those two years and I'm here now. Um, it's, it's interesting that I come this week because this is clean water quality. I was scheduled to come last week and I had to go to a funeral, and, and, and Veil Shaw, who we funerated last Tuesday, uh, who was a personal friend of mine, undoubtedly realized that clean water was coming up this week, and so therefore she made sure that I didn't attend last week to talk about this issue, that I come this week. You know, for years and years I've sat on this council talking about the, the effect of having leaves in our gutters, running into our sewer lines, clogging them up, and creating issues with our water. And of all weeks, I'm here to talk about that. I tried for years, a number of years, to get this council to bag their leaves. Now, I understand that somebody might have a leaf bag. You want to just show it to them? You left it upstairs, okay. But seriously though, it has been shown throughout this country, and particularly even in this state, that there are a number of cities who have been able to save money as a result of bagging their leaves, having an ordinance to bag their leaves, and even the city furnishing the bags. The cost that it cost us, and I'm not sure now what the cost is now, but the last time, if I remember correctly, it was over a hundred and some thousand dollars for one of those units when you buy everything to pick up leaves. And I think we have two of them, is that correct? Uh, we had two, I don't know what we got.
We have six leaf machines running, and we got another one that runs half the time.
Oh, okay. However many we got, half the time they don't run, you're right, and that's the other problem. But you've got hundreds of thousands of dollars tied up in that machinery when you can take the money for one machine and furnish enough bags for this city for years. And you can just pick them up on a pickup truck. If they break down, and a lot of times we have that issue, get a pickup truck and go pick them up. You can use your truck, Johnny, or whoever, but it's, it's a serious issue, plus it's also an environmental issue if you can get those leaves bagged, and I, and I'm serious about this, and I, and I know, uh, I had a lot of opposition from one council member who's no longer here, then the other one, I understand, so he cut all his trees down because he knew I was coming back. So, he don't have an issue with that now, I don't think he does. But hopefully this council will, will seriously consider this and also have the clerk to just talk with other cities and find out exactly what effect it had on their cities when they went from leaf pickup to bagging those leaves, because it's a very important issue when it comes down to our environment, and I would hope that very seriously that this council will, will look at that very much. The other thing about leaf pickup and, and what have you, we get into a manpower situation, and I'm going to request now that this council go on record, or hopefully go on record, at looking at when the summertime come and we don't have the leaves, we do have these overgrown lots, uh, that, the houses that we're tearing down. If we could get this council to go on record to sponsor or to hire enough of our young people to have a crew per district, uh, we waited for weeks and weeks in my neighborhood to get the, the grass cut because we had one crew going all over the city. We could take away two birds with one stone, and that is employing enough of our young folks during the summer to keep them off the street, keep them out of trouble, and our police department don't have to be trying to go find them because they can be working. If we could set up a cleanup crew for each district, I think it was going to be very beneficial to this city. And see, I didn't have to have five minutes. I'm pretty much through with that. I thank this council for allowing me to come, but at the same time, I'm putting you on notice, I will be back. Thank you.
Can I ask Mr. Avery a question?
Sure you can.
Uh, the leaf bags, are you saying that, uh, we give the citizens bags and they bag up their own leaves?
Yes, ma'am.
And you believe that will be effective?
Yes, ma'am.
That the citizens will put the leaves in the bag?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
It, it, it's happened in a, in a bunch of cities. Right off the top of my head, I know Montgomery was doing it, I'm not sure other cities, but it's easy for the city clerk to call these, call around and find out from these other cities. I, I want to say harmful, but don't quote me on that, but I do know back during the time that we were seriously looking at it, uh, the city of Montgomery went to that, 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 uh, bagging the leaves thing, and I know several other major cities in Alabama do, and they save money even by furnishing those bags.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Avery.
Okay.
It's not a question, I just want to let you know that we do have a three-man crew in each district, a weed-eating crew that weed eats, and, but you are right on the, uh, the big moors, the tractors, we only had one crew, but, uh, we put in the budget for this year coming up to have another crew, enough for the equipment, the big lawn moors and the truck and the manpower, so they should get to more areas quicker, you know, the grass season.
If you had seven crews, then you wouldn't have to worry about.
Well, we, we talked about that too.
Okay, I just want to let you know, seven crews is better than two.
Robert, you might remember this back in, uh, probably late 70s, we would go out here and hire, all these kids would come out here, these underprivileged kids that wouldn't have the money to buy their school clothes and stuff like that, and the city would actually work those, uh, those kids for like it was eight weeks, they would work them and pay them, you know, to do that kind of stuff. That was back in 77, 78, 79, and that was a really good program, you know, we just had one guy over them and he would take them out, you know, and the other guys would check on them during the day, and that was a really good program we had to then. But I think the laws changed now whether they can't operate a chainsaw and equipment like that, I'm not for sure, Lee probably didn't want to answer that question, but I think that's what happened.
But it, it goes back further than the 70s because I was on those crews in the 60s, and it was called the NYC program.
I know, I was in the 70s with them.
See, I'm a lot older than you, so that's why. But you're absolutely correct, and we can still do that. Um, you can hire those younger folks to do the, the whatever, and then if it takes an older person to operate whatever machinery, still you have those crews cleaning up, picking up paper, and making sure that those areas are clean. Though there's always a way around it, you just got to think through it.
I'm, I'm gonna save the bags, my bags, you give somebody else, you can give them somebody else, I don't have any trees. I cut all mine down.
So did another council member. I, I won't call his name, but Bob said, I mean, uh, one of the council members said he cut his trees down so he didn't have to worry about doing his leaves. He knew I was coming.
I got plenty of neighbors, Bob, uh, that, uh, let the leaves blow over all my yard.
If they bag them, you don't have that problem.
I know it. If, if, if we can make them bag them, I'll be, I'll be surprised.
Okay.
We, we do, uh, we have tried to add more people. On the kids, we hire a lot of them in the summer, and the career tech kids that are in heating and cooling, like, they, they work. A lot of the other kids, they'll work a day or two, they don't even come back and get their check. You can't hardly get kids like we used to in the end to work, they just don't work.
Well, you know, I think.
We're, we're working on all that.
I think there's a lot of children and a lot of young people out there who will work, we just got to find them and, and make sure we keep our city clean, because it's a two-pronged thing. We, we're giving them money, spending money for schools, and at the same time, we're keeping them off the streets and, and keeping our city clean.
You know, if the young generation don't know how to work, like the mayor said, we have them all the time, we do, and they work for one or two days, quit, it's too hard to work, they say, you know, but back when we was coming up, we had to do stuff like that, there wasn't no we do when I was coming up.
Well, just stick around, there's going to be a lot of them that's going to have to do it in the next, in, in the few day, in a few days in the future too.
Also, I, I've talked with the mayor about this, people move out of a house and they just take the furniture and just sit it on the curb, and the city picks it up for nothing. I mean, that's ridiculous, uh, and I'm getting with them more to find out what we can do about that, but those are rental people, and, and when, when they move out, the guy that owns the house just sits it on the curb, and, and they shouldn't be able to do that.
You see, I, you brought up a bunch, bunch of issues, that's why I didn't want the clock, but you're absolutely correct, I had a neighbor to move out, and where is he? He's in here a few minutes ago, uh, Mike, thanks to Mike, but I had to call him every week to clean up that, that mess that they were putting out from that rental property.
Yeah.
But at least he did show up, but when, they did show up, but the other thing they did, do we not have rakes and brooms anymore on these trucks?
Supposed to, every truck has one.
Well, undoubtedly, the trucks that come in my district don't have them anymore because nobody rakes and nobody sweeps up, and the neighbors had to go out there after they picked up all the heavy stuff to go out there and sweep up and, and rake the, the other stuff, so.
Yeah, that's moral.
I, I know Mike has been responding to that, and maybe I need to call Mike again when they don't rake and sweep, but that's another issue that, that comes up.
We don't have brooms, we just have weak rakes on them.
Yeah, we, we have truck in every district.
I know.
And a lot of other municipalities, they'll charge 40, 50 bucks. They come out and look at it, tell you what they're charging, and we do it for free, but if we didn't, I'm afraid it'd be dumped all over town.
Well, each, each city, and if you can get her to check that too, since I'm not here anymore and I won't be voting on it, but cities do charge to pick up, uh, furniture and refrigerators and stuff like that.
Most of them.
You know, I was opposed to charging our citizens for it, like I was opposed to the garbage fee, but you guys might not be, so y'all want to charge them, go ahead, they'll, that'll change a whole lot of things.
It's in our ordinance now.
Yeah, they do.
If we pick it up, we just don't charge it.
They do. I had one like that where they dumped the whole house out.
Yeah.
Okay, and they not going to pick that up, the city will not pick that up unless we do an ordinance, because they can't come on the property, okay? Then they find out who the owner of that house is and they put a lien on it, this, the, uh, charge how much it is for the weight to take it to the landfill.
That's good.
But, uh, I got them out there with the mayor's help, because the mayor has to do it.
Yeah.
They come out and pick it up off the street right then.
Right.
Because I was getting so many complaints.
Right.
But then they had it all in the dang on, uh, garage, wait, the garage doors were open and all in the yard, and it took us to do a, a resolution to get them on there.
To get them on there.
Uh, so that takes time, you can't just do it right away.
Yeah, the streets is what I'm concerned about, but I understand what you're saying, you, it takes the, the legal process.
And I tried to tell people, if you put a little bit out at a time, they will pick it up.
Sometimes.
With no problem. Well, if they don't, call your, uh, representative, your councilperson for that district, and I could go through the mayor and the proper channels, it's protocol.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Avery.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, remarks by the mayor and council. Mayor?
We had the parade, Kiwanis does have a Christmas parade, it was scheduled yesterday. I checked with James Spann, the National Weather Bureau, and EMA, and they said it was going to be raining really hard about 4:30 or 5, so we called it off. Uh, I think some of them might have got a little disgruntled that we did. It was announced, I think, that, uh, it wouldn't be rescheduled. As soon as we see we're going to get three or four days of sunshine, we will have a Christmas parade, so just want everybody to know that.
All right, Councilwoman Toles?
Uh, yes, uh, you know, sickle cell is a very, um, deforming disease, and the City of Gaston has supported sickle cell in this area, and I just wanted to congratulate Fred Zachary. In fact, he was part of, I'm part of the team in, um, Mr. Buster Postiers too, where we were winners of Team One, but Freddie Zachary has been named to the East Alabama Foundation Board, so I'd like to congratulate him for that.
Ms. Eccles? Councilman Worthy?
And if they don't reschedule the, uh, parade anytime soon, we having one on Tuscaloosa Avenue, a Christmas parade on Saturday at 5 o'clock, and I don't believe Cal or Revelation Committee will have a problem with anybody wanting to, uh, come down that was in this, uh, supposed to have been in the parade Monday night, so y'all come on down. Thank you.
Councilman Billingsley?
Uh, are you on my time to Mr. Marcia Bush, please?
Hello?
Hello.
Thank you, Mr. Billingsley. And I come today not with anything new, just to remind us as to where we are, of what's going on, and I made some notes, so I just won't be rambling on because this is a thing to me that's a sore eye, that works my nerves, that we are not making any changes in the City of Gaston, uh, changes that affect our children. So, uh, I'm just going to read you what I have. I come today standing as a president of our local SCLC chapter, and I just want to remind the council as well as the City of Gaston, I'm asking that we will focus more on the Gaston City School system. As we say, our children are our most precious assets. Uh-uh, lost my place. If that is the case, we should do all that we can to make sure that our children get the best education. There are things going on in our classrooms from teachers that should never take place, where the teachers are making racial statements, bullying our children, making fun of their bodies, makeup or size, or teachers using abusive language, teachers with these bad attitudes, and we want to talk about how our children act when they leave school. and we wanna talk about how our children act when they leave school, do they ever consider what they receive from school? When our children graduate from schoo- school, we have had, when our children graduate from school, they should be excited or happy about their school experience, but instead we have some students as well as parents expressing how their child's school experience was some of the hardest years of their lives. Students were mistreated by a teacher for no reason, even after they were no longer a student in her class. The teacher went as far as going to the lunchroom where the, where the child was placing an apple on the table where the student was sitting and said, "You forgot this," implying that because of her weight, that should be her meal. This situation got so bad, after both parents had been to the school several times, the mother told the principal, if this action continues, she would call six, Fox Six on your side. Instead of the teacher being dismissed or removed from the classroom, uh, put somewhere where she would not be working directly with students, the principal just started mugging the lunchroom when the student was in the lunchroom, so the problem was not solved. Today's students are still posting comments about being harassed, afraid of moving forward because of some of their records, some because of no one believing them, some no one will listen to. Statements from parents says, "It's hard to hope for the best for our students when the people who are in charge are trying to shelter the facts that these things happen, that the situations with our school system is not getting better, only worse, because we continue to have a person leading our school system that does not have all of our students as a first priority, that our city is only as good as our educational system. A quality school system will only bring some quality to our city. We continue to allow these teachers to treat our students as if they are not our future leaders that need to be loved, taught and encouraged to put their best foot forward. That's for all students, that they may be able to reach their highest potential to become productive adults." I say to the council today, as the city council allocate money for our school system, we ask that you contin- that you consider who and how controls this money. Our tax dollars are governed with whom we entrust to spend the money. Make our city a better place in which we all would be glad to live, people would be glad to visit and et cetera that goes on. Please help us to support our students in a productive way now, not later, because we are, crime rate for the city of Gaston continues to grow, our drop our rate for our children, especially our black males, continue to increase. Our children are going to school not receiving the proper education because they are not treated equally and unfair. So today we stand and ask that as you consider your budget and passing money on, that you will consider who and how this money will be spent, that our children will be able to go anywhere and compete anywhere in the world with the education that they've received from the Gaston City School System. Thank you.
Councilman Cannon?
I just wanna remind everybody that Friday and Saturday in Alabama City Gazebau, you can come down and get your picture made with Sandra and your kids down there. I talked with Shane today, we've got half the lights around the gazebo done, ma'am, we don't have the shrubs done and the little trees at the gazebo and he's gonna try to work on that for us. Also, I tell you, there'll be a lot of folks at, uh, Ritz Theater Friday, Saturday and Sunday, they'll be down there for the Sanders Christmas, so just come out down on Wall Street and enjoy yourself and have a good time down there.
Councilman Reed?
Go ahead.
Just a couple of quick items, um, do wanna thank the mayor for his commitment to the, uh, Christmas party, uh, Christmas party, Christmas parade and, uh, and, uh, we, we look forward to, to be, look forward to being able to, to, to have a parade for those who are interested and of course, as, as a reminder, this, um, this Saturday, the tenth, is it? Yeah, this Saturday, uh, the Carver Revitalization Committee will be, uh, hosting the parade on, on Tuscaloosa Avenue, so please, please support, it's five P.M., uh, start, so please support that, uh, where you can. As always, I do like to, to point out and highlight, um, when we have citizens to, uh, to speak. Do appreciate, uh, former council member Avery and, and, uh, and, and, and Marcia for, Ms. Kendry for the, the manner in which you presented your concerns, that's always important and, uh, we hear you loud and clearly, for sure, we hear you loud and clearly. Uh, do have a couple of, of announcements. On Tuesday, December thirteenth, pre-council meetings will begin at two P.M., followed by council meeting at three P.M. Then we'll return to the, uh, regular schedule of our council meetings on the twentieth. And again, this is for next, next Tuesday, the thirteenth, pre-council meeting will begin at two P.M., uh, followed by a council meeting at three P.M. And this adjustment is made for us to, uh, to be able to coordinate with, uh, a ceremony that's gonna be held at four P.M., I believe. Okay, is there anything else? All right, entertain a motion that we adjourn.
I move to adjourn.